My Valley Water District for turf rebates at two schools. Rialto Middle School received twenty-five thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars and seventy cents. Kelly Elementary received twenty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars. For further information, please contact Christine Farlow, MPA, Managing Water Use Efficiency Extracurricular Affairs, San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District. Headphone nine zero nine three eight seven nine two two nine. Cell phone nine zero nine two eight five six five six five. Listening Gil Navarro.
Uh, Dr. Avila, uh, Board President, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Montes.
Uh, Dr. Avila, could you please have somebody reach out to, uh, that water district? We've got, we've got plenty of other areas that could use some water conservation grants, uh, to replace unused grass and vegetation, replace it with water efficient turf?
Absolutely, I'll have staff look into that, uh, first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Next comments start from Ms. DeGortas, she has a couple of questions. Will online learning be ready to implement to our students by Monday, April thirteenth? And will the school year extend beyond the end of May to make up for the lost time? And so I will have staff, uh, contact Mrs., uh, Ms. Gorta to answer her questions. Next up is Mr. Tobin Brinker. Your Board members and Superintendent Avila, I have three issues to address tonight. The first issue has been brought to be by other teachers. The issue is grades during distance learning. Before I delve into the specific concerns, I want to thank everyone in Ed Services Department and all the teachers and administrators that are working overtime to make our transition to distance learning easier. I want to specifically thank REA bargaining team that worked on the MOU for distance learning. Even with all the hard work, though there are a seri- there are issues we still need clarified. The following issue about grading is tricky because each content area and grade level will have specific issues and insights that need to be considered. Here's the issue as it was brought to me. On the one hand, we have been told not to grade student work and to only teach review material, but simultaneously, we have been asked to raise the grades for the students who show improvement during this time of distance learning. Each grade level and content area have specific questions and issues about what this looks like and how to do it. An example, at the elementary level, each trimester has a discrete list of skills that a student must master to earn a specific grade. Can a teacher teach third trimester skills? How do they determine if a student is made without grading, et cetera? Perhaps we can create a grid that addresses the concerns for each grade level content area. One primary concern is, will we be completing report card grades for every grade level that reflects end of year grades? Or will there be no report card, or is it a modified, altered report card, third quarter, second trimester? Second issue, on March fifteenth, I sent an email to Rhonda Kramer asking for a copy of the latest seniority list and received no response. I followed up with a second email to Rhonda and included Rio MacGyver on April first. Again, I received no response. Yesterday, I sent a third email and this time I included a quote from the California Public Records Act that shows I should have had a response within ten days. I mention all of this here because teachers are being asked to respond to parent and student emails within twenty-four hours, but my emails to our personnel office have been ignored for almost a month. Any help to get me a copy of our seniority list would be appreciated. Third issue, teachers are starting to talk about our calendar for next year with the idea that some changes may be necessary because of the coronavirus. I wanted to encourage you to engage on this issue sooner rather than later. One idea I keep hearing is that delaying the start of the year until after Labor Day might be necessary depending on how long the virus is dangerous. Other ideas are about adjusting next year's calendar with a flex schedule. So if we are asked to shelter at home again in the spring, the school year might extend into the summer. I am not advocating for either of these specific options, but I am advocating for a proactive approach that provides options depending on what might happen next year. I hope you begin the process with your calendar committee now and create multiple calendars that anticipate possible issues because of the coronavirus. Sincerely, Tobin Brinker, history teacher, Frisbee Middle School. And that's all we have on public comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we move on to public comments on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have any?
Uh, President O'Kelly, we have none.
Okay. Uh, comments from Association Executive Board members, do we have any?
Yes, we have, uh, one from Lisa Lindberg, President REA. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. I would like to thank both our REA and our USD negotiations team for the excellent work they did on formulating an MOU for distance learning. As our CTA consultant said, you were building the plane as you flew it. We believe it is very well done and comprehensive. While not perfect, our MOU has still been used by other districts in the state to draft their MOUs for distance learning. Well done, Rialto. I also want to thank all of the services in our USD and the folks who continue to report to work to make sure essential tasks are completed. This includes Personnel Services, Nutrition Services, Business Services, and Education Services. You are appreciated. As we continue to navigate through this unprecedented crisis, it is my hope we can continue to do what is best for all students, staff, and the community as a whole. We truly are bridging futures. Thank you for your time and please stay safe, healthy, and happy.
Okay, do we have any from CSBA?
We have none.
Uh, CWA?
We have none.
And RSMA?
We have none.
Okay. All right, uh, now we go to comments from the superintendent, Dr. Avila.
Thank you, President O'Kelly. I want to thank, uh, staff, parents, students, and everybody involved. Uh, thank you for your patience, understanding, and support as together we rise during this unprecedented experience. I thank each of you for your contribution to our collective composure during the closure of schools. Staff, whether you are working from home, reporting to work several days per week, or reporting to work every day, know that you matter and that the work you do is appreciated. The district continues to prepare for distance learning, and with each challenge that emerges, we see it not as a barrier but as an opportunity to make a difference. That is the Rialto way. As we move forward on our current journey, I strongly encourage each of you to continue practicing social distancing and frequent hand washing. And most of all, accept our new reality and maintain a positive attitude as you, uh, as positive an attitude as you possibly can, as this will make a world of difference on whether our experience with this crisis will be remembered as one governed by harmony and kindness or chaos and hate. That is all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. Uh, comments from members of the Board of Education, let's start with Mr. Ayala.
Well, thank you, President O'Kelly. Hope everything's well at home. Uh, we're doing our best here at Ayala Residence as well. And, uh, I want to begin by, uh, thanking all the employees of our school district who have stepped up, who, uh, did their bet, who have done their best to make a positive difference for our kids and our educational community. Uh, my hat's off to them and, uh, want them to know that we, we definitely appreciate them. Um, I like what, uh, Mr. Brinker said about being proactive, about the multiple calendars. That's a, a very good idea. And in addition to being proactive with the calendars, uh, what we have learned by mistakes or by anything positive through this coronavirus, uh, is, you know, we all have to, we're into this together, obviously, and, uh, not a bad idea to take note what works and what doesn't work and prepare for the second bout. I, I have to believe we're going to go through this again. And, uh, if, if we come up together with a plan along with what the rest of the world is doing, um, I think, uh, we can minimize the, uh, the effects and, and not be in such, uh, panic mode. But we have to definitely do things together, such as wear masks or, uh, everybody needs to be tested, but we need the test kit. But we have some time, we're not over, you know, we're not over this first bout yet, but, uh, you know, we do have some time to work on the second, uh, time around, which I have to believe will come back. So I guess in summary, um, you know, I know we've heard this before, failure to plan is plan to fail. And, you know, if we can just save one life because we are proactive, personally, I know I will sleep a lot better knowing that we did our best to take care of our kids and our community. And, uh, I hope, uh, everybody's doing well again and, uh, we're into this together. And, and, uh, remember, if we're going to err, we're going to err on safety and not come back and say, I wish we'd have done more. So I applaud everybody at the school district, I applaud all those volunteers, I applaud all the people that are doing their best to make a positive difference. Thank you, President O'Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Okay, moving on with Mr. Montes.
Thank you, Board President, Mrs. O'Kelly. I, I don't have a whole lot, I just want to, again, uh, also thank all of the hardworking staff, uh, who continue to work, uh, during this, this, um, uh, unprecedented time. Uh, just want to remind everyone to stay safe, stay healthy, um, it's better to be safe than sorry, don't go out unless you have to, and, um, just continue to spend time, uh, with as much as possible with your individual, uh, family households and, um, you know, hopefully this all, uh, is over soon. Uh, but other than that, just thank you, uh, Board, thank you Superintendent Dr. McDuffie, all of the, uh, uh, district, uh, leadership and, 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 uh, all of our teachers are qualified. Thank you for everything you guys do. Uh, big shout out and thank you to our nutritional, uh, staff workers who continue to provide thousands, thousands of meals, uh, for our students, um, during this time. And, and, and thanks again for all of the school sites and the people involved in the rollout of the devices for our students who, uh, need those devices to do their distance learning. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. Okay, uh, Board Clerk, Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, President O'Kelly. First, I just wanted to say to everyone, I miss you. Uh, seeing you and, uh, shaking your hand, well, the new normal doesn't include shaking hands and may not for some time. Um, I did want to offer some information regarding COVID. Um, San Bernardino County Department of Public Health, uh, has a data dashboard and that is accessible, the easiest way that I, I know, I've compiled everything on my webpage, joemartinez.org, joemartinez.org. Very top of the page, there's coronavirus, uh, COVID nineteen info page. And there is lots of information there, including the data dashboard, a self-check, um, list from, uh, that I got from Medicare, yeah, I'm an old guy. Um, and first question, do I have COVID nineteen? It goes through the scenario and has you self-checked. There's, um, so many people are afraid of that and, uh, well, if we've got it, it gives you directions, how to, uh, respond, whether it's, uh, reach out to your medical, uh, care provider or, uh, to care at home. Um, in particular, it gives you, uh, if you have emergency warning signs, and it'll specifically tell you. Um, other than that, the data dashboard, I've been tweeting this, but it's important for our young people to hear. Um, San Bernardino County, on the dat- data dashboard, San Bernardino County has six hundred and forty-one positive cases. There have been six thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine patients tested. And that gives us a percentage of positive of nine point six percent. Uh, in San Bernardino County, there have been twenty deaths. Um, it doesn't specifically say, um, age or anything there. In location, there's tabs at the bottom, and I selected the location tab, and I go down to Rialto. There are twenty-seven positive cases that the county has, um, identified for Rialto, twenty-seven. And the most concerning part to me, as one who watches our, our next generation, uh, okay, uh, the demographics. The people zero through seventeen, those who are still at home listening to mom and dad, mom and dad are saying, no, you can't go out, sit down, you know, you can't. And zero to seventeen, there have only been seven positive cases. The largest group is the group of eighteen to forty-nine. Two hundred and ninety-nine both identified, uh, as positive carriers. And the next group is a hundred and eighty-nine, fifty through sixty-four age group. And then, uh, sixty-five plus is a hundred and sixty-five cases. And they've identified one is unknown age, so not sure how that slipped through. Other than that, yeah, everyone needs to adhere to the governor's mandate to stay home, the San Bernardino County mandate. If you're going out, you need to wear a mask if you're, um, meeting anyone face-to-face in the public. They have clarified that you don't need to wear a mask while you're driving alone in the car. So there, there's a lot of conflicting information, and there will continue to be a lot of conflicting information, including prom notices, graduation notices, when school starts, all the questions that, um, our association family have asked us. All of them are important, but quest- the questions are timely, the answers not so much. So bear with us, we're doing the best we can to implement. Um, learning in distance begins on the thirteenth, which is, uh, I believe it's Monday, the thirteenth. So our, uh, teachers are getting ready, our students, I'm sure they'll be raring to go for something to do other than sit and, and get bored. So, um, stay in touch with your friends via phone, via Twitter, via Facebook, whatever your choice is. Um, work on your mental wellness, because right now, um, the county and California is reaching out. There are twenty-four hour suicide prevention lines, domestic violence lines, um, stay-at-home orders, everything is defined, and that is on the covidnineteen dot california dot gov page. Covidnineteen dot california dot gov page, and, uh, all that information is available there. So, um, from my family to your family, we, we wish you health and we wish you well-being. And, um, can't wait to see you each face-to-face and, uh, without a mask, that day will come. So, Madam President, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Uh, Board Vice President, Miss Gina Walker.
Uh, thank you, and thank you, uh, Board Clerk Martinez. You said everything I was going to say, so. Just an update of information, uh, and, and, uh, which is very much, uh, a key. Um, and I'd just like to say ditto to, um, all the other comments from the other board members. Thank you first and foremost to our district staff, as well as some of the volunteers that are coming out to help during this time as well, because we could not do this without you. So we, we thank you very much, and you are in my prayers, um, for not only our staff but also their families. Um, everybody just say, stay safe and stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Okay, I would just like to say, just like Mr. Martinez began his, is I really miss everybody. Is having these meetings by phone like this is, uh, difficult and not having, uh, all the people we usually see and whatever. So I do deeply miss everybody. And I just want to repeat the thank you, because the work you are doing, uh, at the district, all of the different departments, nutrition services, safety and security, ed services, business services, the teachers, maintenance, it goes on and on. And this district has kept going and we are providing for our students, and it is because of you. Thank you so much, you are appreciated beyond belief. And I just want to say, stay strong, stay positive, and stay safe, and we will get through this. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on with the agenda, next item is public hearing, is there a motion to open public hearing? So moved?
Second.
Second? Okay.
Second.
Um, vote by board members to open public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public hearing is, uh, initial proposal from California School Employees Association, CSBA, pursuant to the requirements of government code and board policies, the twenty-twenty-one proposal submitted by the California School Employees Association, CSBA, for an agreement between the California School Employees Association, CSBA, and the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education, is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice. Is there a motion to close public hearing?
So moved?
So moved? Second? Second? Uh, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed at 7:27 PM. Moving on with the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless told by Board of Education members or the Superintendent for Individual Action. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second?
Is there a second?
Second?
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Are there any polls, any discussion on any of these items? Okay, let's have vote by board members to approve consent calendar items, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Moving on to the session action items. Uh, F1 is closer of seven inactive county schools to fill these sub-funds within Fund 35. Uh, is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second?
Is there a second? Okay.
Second?
Uh, any discussion? Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I think that was everybody. All right, uh, then second item is Revolution Number 19-20-51, Temporary Interfund Borrowing Between Funds. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So moved. Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's three.
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
I made the motion. Aye.
Yep, but we're doing the vote now.
I, I, I would just, I, I would just, uh, Nancy, just for, uh, uh, clarification, uh, to, uh, those listening to the board meeting and for whoever might be recording the minute, um, usually that's Martha, I don't know if she is, uh, or someone is filling in for her, but just to make it easier, it'd probably be better to do roll call voic- uh, roll call votes since we're teleconferencing.
Okay.
So you can call our, you, yeah, you can, yeah, you can call her name and then it, uh, vote individually.
Okay, let's try that. Uh, Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
And Ms. O'Kelly, aye. All right. Adjournment. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District will be held on April 22nd, 2020 at 7:00 PM, via teleconference and streamlined only. Materials distributed or presented to the Board of Education at the board meeting are available upon request from the Superintendent's office. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Vote by board members. Uh, Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
And Ms. O'Kelly, aye, and this meeting is adjourned at 7:31 PM.
Good night, everyone.